I want to call this city council meeting together for Monday, August 19th, 2024. I am Alder Person Mike Bruno substituting for the missing -- well, the mayor is traveling. Alder Person Maladra, who is mayor pro tem, is ill, so he's joining us remotely. So I guess that makes me mayor pro tem tem. Ms. Kellogg, if you could take the role.
All right. Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Maladra here.
Marks?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Not sure his sound is on out here. I heard it coming from the closet.
Oh, can you say something, Craig?
I've never been in the closet. I'm here now.
We're good. We're good.
Excellent.
Okay, moving on in the agenda here. Public hearings specialize in the presentations. Oh, yeah, pledge of allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry. Begin the pledge of allegiance, which be led by me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, are there any amendments to the agenda tonight? The record show that Alder Person Ruby has arrived. Any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, sensing none. That's a voice vote. Is that correct?
You don't need amendments. There's no amendment.
Oh, yeah, there's no amendments. Omnibus agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city of -- city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless city council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the omnibus or consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. All items on the omnibus agenda require a simple majority vote unless otherwise indicated. Do I have a motion? Moved by Alder Person Swanson, seconded by Pashke. Any discussion? Seeing none, sensing none. That is a roll call vote.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Okay, let's see. That makes it unanimous. Approved. We are down to item eight, municipal bills for payment. If Ms. Kellogg could read the bills.
All right. Municipal bills for payment total $4,139,036.97.
Do I have a motion?
Chair, I move --
Go ahead.
I move that we pay the bills in their aggregate, the individual items that add up to which can be found in the packet on the city's website.
Does it?
Individually and in the aggregate.
Individually and in the aggregate, yep.
The second was Swanson? No, that was Councilor. Any discussion? Seeing none, sensing none. Roll call, please.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye. Two committee of the whole items of business. Item nine, nine A, consider ordinance number 2024-32, redistricting the ward boundaries of the city of Geneva. Moved by Bowring, seconded by Pashke. Alder Person Swanson.
Thank you, Alder Person Bruno. I guess I reviewed the map and I'm still uncomfortable with one piece of it, and I believe Alder Person Maladra brought it up at our last meeting, that we would have an opportunity to make motions or amendments to this map, and that's the Cambridge spur. There's a little part of Cambridge that is being attributed to a ward on the other side of Randall Road, and I think that it makes sense to keep that neighborhood intact. It's a very small, 96 people live on that stretch, and I would make an amendment to move that little strip of Cambridge from, I believe it's the third ward or the fourth ward, to the fifth ward, to make it green as opposed to gray.
Just as a point of clarification, I think you're asking to move it from the second ward to the fourth ward.
Thank you. I don't have the map in front of me, but to add it back in with the rest of Pepper Valley.
So that is a formal motion?
Yes.
Is there anyone?
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Sure.
I don't think the amendment is in order because it would make us vote against the main motion. Amendments can only bring consensus to it, and no amendment can be done that would make -- that would be in contrary to the main motion. And the motion is that a map has been put forward. I believe that the motion should be up or down on that map. An amendment to the map would mean that we vote against the map and start a new map.
I don't think that's right. It would be an amended map, you'd be voting on it. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I followed the logic. I was reading Robert's Rules of Orders, understanding that there might be an amendment tonight, and no amendments are allowed. That would be in contrary to the main motion. But it's not contrary to the main motion. It's a different map. How can we be? It's a change to the map. It's not a different map. It's a change to the map. It's not fundamentally changing the map. I mean, you could vote no on the amendment. I believe it's fundamentally changing the map. It's completely new lines. Then vote no. Well, I think I brought up a point of order, though. Okay.
The -- well, I would not be the expert in this. I guess I'll take the council's suggestion that we can still move ahead with the panel. As the chair, I will take council's recommendation that we just -- we can move ahead with this and still vote on the amended map, if we have a second for that.
A second.
Seconded by Ruby. So discussion on that amendment, Bowring and Mayor?
So I think it makes sense to not change the map in this way because what we're trying to do is bring the wards in as much balance as possible. It is 97 people, I believe. I'm not reading that off of the answers. However, it's also putting 97 people then back into the largest ward, the ward that right now is, you know, diluting the one-person-one-vote principle, which I think is a large part of the precedent for redistricting, for drawing these new boundaries. So I think, given that there will be changes in the future, it behooves us at this point to try to make these wards as evenly balanced as possible. I would say to the issue of breaking up a neighborhood, like, there's always going to be a line somewhere, and I think that we're working from census tracts, and I think that this is a reasonable boundary, and I think if we move 97 people here, you gotta -- where do you move the 97 people back to? Because then I think, if I'm recalling correctly, it's actually depleting what is the smallest ward by numbers, then the second ward of those 97 people, so that's magnifying the problem. So I do not support this amendment. I think that we're doing our best to be as fair as possible to all of the voters of Geneva, and I think that that means that some neighborhoods will feel that they have some changes, that everyone is going to be more represented at this point because their votes will matter more. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Alder Person Mayor, did you --
I just have a quick question. Just Rich or anyone, are you looking at the map? Do you have the page number?
I am looking at the map right now.
Is it in the packet or?
Yes, it is.
What number? What page number?
Page 97.
97.
Thank you.
Did you have any comments for the?
No, I just wanted to see the map. It's hard to have a discussion about something that I don't have visual of in front of me.
Yeah, well, having --
And then the numbers, the numbers per ward are also listed here.
Yeah, there is.
Okay. So the -- so, sorry, do I have the floor?
Let's keep the floor.
Okay, thank you. So Bob, do you know it would take 100 out of Ward 2 and add them to Ward 4?
That's correct.
Your proposed change? Okay. Thank you. I am done for now. Thank you.
Alder Person Mayor?
So I listened to the meeting that I missed on the 5th, and I listened to everybody's point of view. I really still don't understand why there's such concern. I was the one who brought up that Cambridge was on the wrong side originally, and then it was also echoed by one of the audience members, I believe. I also saw and met with Stephanie, the city administrator, and went over all the calculations that she'd done and how this got set out. This wasn't a surprise to me. It wasn't -- it was laid out to us that it was going to be part of our year to look at this. I think that the more -- I think the problem with redistricting is when it gets political, and I don't see anything political happening here as far as the discussion so far. I don't think that anybody really feels strongly that there's a strong need to have any particular house in our ward or not. It just needs to be compact and contiguous, right? So there was one drawing that showed the fourth ward kind of bifurcated with -- in a different way that was less appealing to me because it just didn't look like what it is now. And that's the problem, is that Ward 4 is very big right now. It's like 4,700 people, or almost 5,000 in the current state, and that means essentially that the people in the fourth ward are not represented in the same percentage as everybody else. So I tend to agree about Cambridge, but it does throw those numbers off again. And we looked last meeting on August 5th, I think the council considered other options, and it was pretty well reasoned to go with the option A and keep it that way. So I still don't understand why people are -- why Brad, you're in particular upset about this, or not agreeing with this process and this layout of the wards. It's not that it doesn't mean anything to people, it's that it needs to be evenly divided, and that ends up getting tricky in some places. So with all due respect, I'm not going to vote for the motion. I think that it puts us back in a place where Ward 4 has more numbers than anybody, any other ward.
Can you move the amendment?
The amendment. I support this map. I think it's fine. I think enough is enough. We should redistrict and move on, and it should be a pretty simple process to do. Thank you.
Alder Person Pashke?
I agree with Alder Person Mayor. We need to do the best we can to keep the numbers as even as possible. I would also point out, I mean, I agree, it's not ideal to ever split across streets. We also have Prairie View Drive on the far west side of the fourth ward that neighbors across the street are on opposite in different wards, and I don't think, you know, there's no way that we're ever going to have a map where everybody across the street from each other is in the same ward. And I also think that it starts to look too political when we're picking and choosing which streets we want to move around, and I think we need to go by the numbers and go by compact and contiguous and do the best we can to represent the people in our city the best we can. So I also do not support this amendment.
You haven't spoken yet.
No.
I made the motion. Alder Person Swanson?
I appreciate the comments being made here. I get that the goal is to even out the populations in each ward. I guess the piece that bothers me the most about this one particular section is that neighborhood is a complete island. It's not just that we're dividing neighbors across a street, it's that we're -- they're in a ward that is across Randall Road, which is a major divider of the city, along with Geneva Commons and Delnor Hospital, which is not even a residential neighborhood. So we're saying this one little stretch of two blocks of one side of a street is going to be in a completely different ward. That's my point. A couple of you have mentioned contiguous. I'm making it more contiguous. I also think that the population by ward could change significantly year by year if Duke &amp; Lees gets developed, or 302 River, or the Mill Race. So, you know, I get the concept. We want to get as close as we can. However, this one particular neighborhood bothered me. That's why I'm making the motion. Thank you.
Alder Person Maladra, do you have anything to add?
Just one thing. I think I said last week, it's my position that neighborhoods aren't defined by political unit boundaries. My neighborhood, for example, includes two blocks that aren't even in the city of Geneva, and yet they are part of our neighborhood. So I think that while it may look to make sense from a particular lens, I worry that we start looking, where do we stop trying to keep neighborhoods together? With the primary criteria being as close to equal in population as we can get, followed by compact and contiguous, I think that it's inevitable that we're going to have these divisions, just as we have divisions with precincts and other political unit boundaries today, and the neighborhoods remain united. So I also don't see the need to make a change here. Thanks.
For myself, I've been thinking about this whole concept of splitting up neighborhoods, and I've rather landed on the idea that I think neighborhoods benefit, to some degree, from splitting them up so that there's investment by more here at the council in different areas, in different neighborhoods. That being said, I have never sensed that any of us here are pitting or favoring our neighborhood over other neighborhoods. I always feel that every resident here has 10 representatives. There might be first point of contact, but we are all, in my experience, working for everyone's best interest. So this -- splitting this neighborhood or peeling this one small portion off doesn't bother me, so I'm fine with the map as it is. Sir?
Do you want to ask a -- oh, is it supposed to record my group name?
Oh. Any other comments, questions on the motion or on the amendment? On the amendment?
A yes vote changes the map. A no vote keeps the map as presented.
Yes vote changes the map that was presented here. No vote returns us to the original motion as presented in the packet. Seeing none, sensing none. If you could take the role.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Nay. Maladra, nay.
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Pashke?
Nay.
What was it?
Three to seven.
Motion passes.
Fails.
Oh, fails. Three to seven. We are back to the original motion for the map. Is there any more discussion on the original motion with the map as presented? Alder Person Marks?
I do not have a problem with the map as it is. The only concern I have with the map is passing it the night before petitions can be starting circulating and that it could cause some confusion. Tomorrow, petitions can start being circulated for the election, and I do have some concerns about that. That is the only concern I have. Otherwise, the map looks fine to me. It's just I wanted to voice those concerns.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments, questions on the map as presented? Alder Person Casarag?
I apologize. This can be a little repetitive from two weeks ago, but again, I'm just saying, kind of along the lines of Alderman. Marks here, I feel this is too rushed. I'm not opposed to redistricting. I don't have any problem with it. I just don't really see this awful harm that's going to happen if we continue as our wards are drawn for one more election. And I think there could be more harm when people are confused about who they're voting for and who they contact, and I think there should be some due diligence on our part of saying, hey, there's new wards. Hey, you have new people that might be knocking on your door, let alone, of course, just public input itself. And I just want to, you know, point out kind of the obvious here. We're voting on a map that literally nobody in this room can see. Nobody watching on TV can see. They can pull it up on the internet on the agenda, but we're talking about modifying a map that we can't see right now here, sitting at the dais, unless you have it pulled up on your computer. But it just is not making sense to me that we're rushing this through at, as Alderman Marks said, the eve before petitions can start going out. You know, I'm probably talking a little out of my area, but obviously I did a lot of reading and thinking about this issue over the last two weeks, and I'm not even sure, you know, the one-person-one-vote is sort of a national and state politic issue. There's actually quite a bit written whether it applies to local politics. Obviously, in theory, we want them to be one, but in local politics, there are other issues at hand that may affect that exact proportionment. So I don't think it's as necessary that we be on track for one, for absolute equal from every ward. I just don't think it's a noble goal, as some of the other Alder people here tonight are trying to make it out to be. I think we're fine if we're plus or minus 1% or 3%. 5% is held by the Supreme Court. 10% has been done. And maybe lastly, the map that we're approving, proposed to approve tonight, doesn't even have all of the Geneva land on it. Some of the annexed land, I know there's no population there, but the annexed land isn't even on there. Why are we approving a map that doesn't even include all of Geneva? So I'm just not getting it here. Obviously, I'm alone, but I'm continuing to say no. Let's spend some more time and let's let the public give us some feedback. Let's let them digest what's going to happen. And lastly, as far as not being political, obviously, that's very, very important, which is why I think we should be hiring this process out instead of trying to do it ourselves. I don't think I should be here picking neighborhoods. I think we hire somebody who comes up with some maps and says, or a map even, and says, here's the way that we look at it using best practices on redistricting. I don't know how to redistrict. It's not my expertise. So anyway, thank you. I'll be running now.
Thank you. Alder Person Mayor?
I just want to say something about the process. I think that we have paid staff that created these maps. We didn't create them. We rely on the expertise of our staff a great deal, and I don't feel like the idea that this was just done by rank amateurs and that we need to hire a consultant is in order. I don't see that at all. And I think that the attempt to argue against one-person-one-vote or one-person-one-vote election is, it's just kind of weird. So I'm still on the same page with this, that the map should move forward. It was put together in a responsible process, and I don't know what the possible downfalls can be. So, thanks.
Alder Person Maladra and then Bowring.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, never mind. Alder Person Bowring?
So I'll attempt not to repeat what Alder Person Mayor said. I do agree with her. I think that this is for the benefit of the public and my colleagues here. I don't think this has been a rushed process. It's actually pretty typical. Most political bodies go through redistricting on a regular basis. Geneva's waited a long time, probably longer than we should have, to redistrict, but when the county redistricted, when the state redistricted, they don't solicit public input for the most part because it's a very technical enterprise. And again, we talked about this, so I won't belabor it. I think it's -- and again, I've sat down with our staff to look at all of the different things that went into this, trying to make sure that every ward kept two incumbents with staggered terms, which limits things because a bunch of us live pretty close together because the, you know, state statute's very vague about how you handle something if you have three incumbents in one ward and several of them don't, their terms don't expire for a while. So I think that that would open up a whole complicated can of worms that would make it a lot more murky. I want to also point out that we are absolutely in adherence with state statute. We are actually doing this well ahead of the deadline. The deadline is 30 days before petitions are due, so I think doing it now is actually prudent and responsible because it means that anybody that's interested in gathering petitions has time to figure out which ward they would be in, to make sure they understand the boundaries for gathering those petitions. And then I will point out the election that this impacts is in April, so I think there's plenty of time for education to happen, and absolutely, I think the city will take those steps. I do just want to, I guess, repeat something that Alder Person Mayor said, which is that I have confidence in our professional staff. I do not think this was arbitrarily done, and I don't think it was done by someone who had interests other than trying to balance the population and keep us out of murky legal areas. So I have no qualms with this, and I guess the last thing I will say is I think questioning one-person-one-vote is, at the local level, does it disservice to the history that went into one-person-one-vote? This is something I've spent time studying as well, and it has to do with basically pretty concrete attempts to disenfranchise people, and while I don't think that's what's happening here, I think now that we have one-person-one-vote established as the law of the land, we want to adhere to it down to the local level so that everyone is getting as fairly represented as possible. And I will point out that while you may feel that it's not impacting anybody, anyone who has run in the fourth ward recently has had to collect probably double the number of signatures that I did running in the first ward. That's indicative of the fact that their ward is overpopulated compared to the others. So you may feel that that's a small thing, but that's asking anyone who wants to run for office to do more work than the rest of us? I don't think that's fair. That means that everyone in their ward, their first point of contact is, you know, two Alder persons, and that could be spread out more evenly. So, thank you.
I just want to make a point that comments should be directed toward the chair, not directly toward other sitting Alder persons. Any other questions, comments, before I recognize Casarag again? Any? Any other hands going up? Alderperson Kassarag?
So just for a point of clarification, I'm not arguing against one person, one vote. I'm arguing against the absolute necessary to get this down to the person. The absolute necessity to have equal 20% in each. I just don't see that that is absolutely necessary down to the person. And as Alderman Swanson said here, it's going to change, like literally in a year or less. The very first development, the very first subdivision, it's going to change the whole dynamic. So that's why I'm saying this feels like we're overvaluing that here at the local level in Geneva. I'm not taking away gerrymandering. I'm not saying that we need to disenfranchise people. I'm not saying that it's not a good idea. I'm just saying we're taking it too far. And the other thing, I've never mentioned anything about staff. I'm really frustrated that every time somebody brings up something on this council, it has to be an indictment of staff. It's not. I never said Stephanie didn't do a good job. I never said I didn't appreciate her work. I said that we should have more time. That's it. That's all I said. More time to do this. So everybody needs to relax about staff and defending staff, in my opinion, here, and realize there might be other considerations. Thank you.
Call a question.
What's the procedure on that?
She called the question, so.
Do we have to vote on calling?
Yeah, just vote.
No second?
On the question. No, you don't need a second, but you vote on the call.
Voting on calling the question?
All right, Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Nay.
Miladra?
Nay.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Pashke?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Let's see, where did, did some, oh, Alderperson Mayor?
I just want to clarify to the chair that the reason why I brought up the work that Stephanie had done, Stephanie Dawkins, the city administrator, was not because anyone had put down the work, but had said that they wanted to hire out for a consultant, period. It was done professionally. It's been presented to us in a professional manner. There's not been a rush. There's a stack of paper that shows the work effort. There is a lot of thought that's been put into this and a lot of number crunching. I don't think we need to hire out a consultant. I don't think we need to wait. Thank you.
And, yeah, I recognize too, the staff has done a really good job with a lot of technical things and statutes to conform to. I'm thinking we do this so seldom, there is merit in trying to at least getting a baseline as close to even as possible, recognizing that it will go. Kittywampus over the years as developments pop up here and there. Is there any other Alderperson? Pashke?
In line with the discussion of keeping things, you know, as even as possible in terms of numbers, I did just want to bring up again, I think someone else already mentioned it, but the discussion previously about moving one street and it not really mattering, the Ward Four already has more than 100 more than the next ward. So in terms of trying to keep things close, adding another 100 to that ward just simply doesn't make sense. I think the map is good. The numbers are as close as they're going to get in a logical way. We need to just move on with this.
Alderperson Miladra, anything?
No, sir.
You froze there for a second, but I did hear a no. Any other questions or comments on?
No, sir.
Seeing none, sensing none, roll call vote. Ms. Kellogg?
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Nay.
Miladra?
Miladra, aye.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to. When do these maps, oh, they're official at this moment. They'll be published and through the county?
They'll go through the process, become official. But I think the intent, I think the intent was to make sure that there is more than 30 days deadline before the first official, before law dictates that they have to be, the process starts for fulfilling the next election.
Thanks. Okay, on to item 10, presentation.
As a, and I'm sure that staff will do this. I think at our website, we have information as relates to filing. In other words, a resident that's interested in running for Alderperson in Geneva, they are able to obtain or print off the necessary documents at our website. And I think that it's important that somewhere contained within that packet of information that there's an alert or some type of recognition to the fact that wards have changed, traditional wards that they're familiar with are no longer exist, boundaries have changed, and that they should refer to the new map to make sure that they're collecting signatures that will not be disqualified.
Very good. I think we can ask staff to make sure that it's made as public.
On our website.
On our website, as quickly and obviously as possible.
And if the council is in agreement with that, I don't think we need to make a motion to that effect.
You can't. Yeah, that's just a general direction that I think we follow.
Item 10, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. 10A, consider resolution number 2024-83 supporting the ITEP grant application for the East State Street Reconstruction Project. Do we have any summary on that?
Need a motion first.
Oh. Moved by Kassarag, second by Pashke. Do we have a?
If I just give you a little primer, the next two items here are going to go somewhat together. The resolutions recommended for approval are in support of an ITEP grant application. That's otherwise known as the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. This program provides partial funding of projects that support or provide and support connected, alternative modes of transportation that are safe for all users, enhance the transportation system, and improve quality of life. The first will be the East State Street project, anticipated for construction in '25, '26. And the second will be for the South, for South Street and the South Seventh Corridor Improvement Project. Try saying that three times fast. Anticipated for '26 or 2027 construction. And then I would just note that we have Director Babica in the audience with us tonight if there are any questions regarding this item, these items.
And these are, basically, we are voting on whether we should ask for free money. See, Alderperson Mayor?
Rich, I have a couple of questions. I have one question, really. What are the improvements that are needed on Seventh Street? This is the segment that runs from South to Route 38, right?
Correct. It is foreseen as the primary improvements are going to be on South Street. But without going into technical detail, for grants of this type, you have to have a logical beginning and a logical end, which are tied into state routes. And so the logical beginning is Route 38 and the logical end on South Street would be Kingville. So by having those two logical points, it creates, it enhances the likelihood of funding consideration.
Okay, so there's no real plan yet?
No, there is. Before you were elected to the City Council, and this is going back probably 2006-ish, 2016?
Oh, okay.
Not six. But we had previously secured an ITEP grant for the same corridor and were beginning the Phase One Design Engineering for bicycle improvements and bike lane improvements throughout the area.
Okay.
And that is the primary focus of this project. While it would also include a classical resurfacing and potentially widening to meet the modern standards, the primary focus is bike lane and pedestrian lane improvements.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? From the public? Seeing none, sensing none. Oh, Alderperson Miladra, anything?
No, sir.
Seeing none, sensing none, roll call vote, please.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Miladra?
Miladra, aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. In the similar vein, consider this 10B, consider resolution number 2024-84 supporting an ITEP grant application for the South Seventh Street Corridor Improvement Project. I think the summary covered both. Moved by Bowring. Second by Kassarag. Any discussion, comments? From the public? Seeing none, sensing none, roll call vote, please.
All right, Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Miladra?
Miladra, aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to public comment. When recognized by the chair, proceed to the podium, state your name for the record and provide your public comments. Please understand this is your time to be heard and the public body's time to listen. No discussion or debate will follow. Is there any, anything from the public? No, if you can just state your name, if it's complicated, spell it for our records. And you have a floor.
Sure. Thank you. I have a couple of photos I wanted to pass out real quick, if that's okay.
Sure.
It'll make sense.
And you'll state your name when you get back up.
All right. Good evening, City Council. My name is Rich Phobes. I'm a resident of Geneva. I'm here tonight in response to a complaint that was made to.
Could I have you spell your name?
Oh, sure. It's Rich, R-I-C-H, last name Phobes, F-O-B-E-S.
Thank you.
Sure. I'm here tonight in response to a complaint that was made to the City Council at a special committee meeting of the whole on July 1st. I was directly and indirectly the subject of the complaint. I'm a beekeeper, among many other things, and the neighbor of the complainant that testified on July 1st. So I wanted to come here tonight and, you know, try and sort of round out the picture surrounding, you know, my beehives, the backyard setup, my experiences in regards to the complaint, as it seems that the complaint has been the impetus to spark a discussion among the City Council on beekeeping in Geneva. I have a wife, Karen, a 12-year-old son, Henry. Six years ago, my son began asking my wife and I for a beehive. And he was very much interested in beekeeping. At that time, we thought, look, son, we love you, but there's no way that we're going to be beekeepers. We lived in a dense area just outside Chicago and it didn't seem feasible. Beekeeping was not anywhere on my radar at all. But my son is very persistent. And two years later, he was still pining for it and his love and his interest hadn't waned for beekeeping. So my wife and I decided to surprise him and bought a brand-new hive for his birthday. That was November of 2020. He was thrilled. Due to the time of the year, we needed to wait until the spring in order to purchase bees and install them in the hive. So in April 2021, we did just that and officially became beekeepers. And since then, I've grown to love it for many reasons, one of which is that I get to experience it with my son. I've always had a conscientious and responsive approach to this endeavor. And, you know, I'd say that we feel strongly that not only is it a fascinating hobby, it is beneficial to the environment and in this case, to our local ecosystem. We're responsible beekeepers. We're very sensitive to neighbors and the community concerns, as we've always been. My family and I moved here June 30th of last year. Prior to moving, I had contacted the city to inquire about beekeeping because I couldn't find anything on the subject. I did see that St. Charles, Batavia, and King County in general had an ordinance in place or some regulations in place. I couldn't find anything about Geneva, so I was advised by the city at the time since there was no ordinance pertaining to beekeeping, it was allowed. We were happy to hear this as we were considering a house and we eventually bought it and moved in. So I've had just only one encounter with the complainant about the bees. And this happened just two days after we moved in. She came over and showed me a video of what appeared to be a handful of bees gently engaged in drinking water from her birdbath. And that was my observation of what was occurring. But, you know, she was upset and concerned about safety and concerned that these were my bees. While there wasn't a way to confirm they were from my hive, I gave it the benefit of the doubt and I offered to put out several more water sources in my yard, which I promptly did. After she expressed further concern about the placement of my hives, I moved them to the other side of my yard, where they currently sit about 100 feet away from her six-foot fence. And so that is relevant to the pictures I was showing you. So one's kind of an overview from my roof deck to show kind of the distance and the other is sort of how it looks looking out from my hives to the fence area. About, it's about 100 feet away, 95, 100 feet. I offered my sincere apologies. I felt bad. I really wanted to get off to like a good start with my neighbor. And, you know, assuming that they were my bees, I explained that the good news was that they were honeybee, or if they were honeybees, they're very docile and utterly disinterested in bothering people when they're engaged in foraging activities like that. I could tell she was pretty concerned, though. So honeybees are docile creatures in general, particularly when they are out foraging and away from their hive. I sincerely and emphatically told her to please feel free to always contact me if she had any other concerns at all. I wanted to do my best to cultivate, you know, friendly neighbor relationships. So a few days later, I was visited by a Geneva City Code compliance officer. He was very nice and he said he received a complaint from my neighbor about the bees. I advised him that I had been in touch with her about the issue, that I had made accommodations to try and alleviate her concerns. And I made myself open to her. You know, we exchanged phone numbers as far as communications moving forward. And he said, at the time, you know, he said he was satisfied with my response and that was that. Feeling as though my neighbor's concerns weren't quite alleviated, I have since extended a few olive branches to her. I brought over homemade brownies. I brought Christmas cookies, you know, offering a few times to be of help and accommodate any other way I could. And I have heard nothing from her since that first week that I moved in about 13 months ago. So fast forward till Tuesday, the 30th, I had a knock at my door and it was a man who introduced himself as a beekeeper in Geneva. And it was a man named John Mazer. I invited him in and he sat down and told me about the special council meeting. And honestly, I was stunned as I. And honestly, I was stunned, as I didn't know about these types, these developments, or any additional or subsequent communications or complaints with my alderman. I would have loved the opportunity to have been here to give my perspective on things, but obviously, I'm here today. So I know it's a little disjointed in that sense. But I understand that the meeting was not recorded, so I've been piecing together what occurred based on Mr. Mazur's accounts, the meeting minutes, and my conversations with Alder Person Bowring, who was very generous with her time with me. All of this to say that without being able to hear exactly what was said, I wanted the city council to meet me in person, so I could give my perspective as it relates to the complaint. Because it bothered me, you know. I felt really bad, and I wanted to just kind of put a name with a face, as far as that goes. So, you know, in summary, I wanted to express to the city council, my family and I are responsible beekeepers. We come from another urban area denser than Geneva, so I fully understand and sensitive to potential concerns of neighbors about it. Currently, my other neighbor to the west of us have been very welcoming. We're very friendly. They have no issues with us. The neighbors in my old neighborhood loved that we had bees. We were friendly as well. We used to have their kids over and other neighborhood kids wanting to explore the backyard hives, and we'd show them the bees all the time. Beekeeping has been a non-issue among all my neighbors until this incident last year. That was brought to you all. If the city council is considering reviewing draft policy on beekeeping, I trust you'll seek out other local beekeepers, local beekeeping associations, such as Fox Valley Beekeeping Association, master gardeners, farmers, et cetera, to get a multitude of perspectives on the benefits, beauty, and importantly, the safety of beekeeping. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can state your name for the record.
John Mazur, M-A-Z-U-R. Indeed, I went over and did see his hives, and they seemed to be extremely benign and positioned perfectly. I doubt that they would really cause much of a nuisance. Now, Batavia, a couple of years ago, investigated making a possible beekeeping ordinance, and they decided that it was best if they did not. Beekeeping generally is not a major nuisance. Again, the bees are friendly, and the ones that attack are usually yellow jackets. So I really think the city council should seriously consider not creating an ordinance. The possible other reason that I have heard for making an ordinance was that beekeeping was not healthy for native bees or native pollinators. I believe the science is still questionable on that. And I think everybody understands that the native pollinators are not adequate to pollinate the agriculture across the country and even in Illinois. Illinois makes its largest amount of gross state product from agriculture, and honeybees are a significant portion of that. It would be nice if we were, if our environment was back to what it was before settlers arrived. 95% of the land was plain or forest, prairie or forest, excuse me. Those plants are all gone, and there's little pockets, some in the forest preserves. And I, amongst others, many others, are planting native plants of questionable value. I'm not sure it is helping that much, but I think it's the best thing we can do to try to restore the native pollinators. In the meantime, the garden club, the city of Geneva, the park district, they're all planting varieties. In some pockets, they do have native plants, and in others, they have decorative flowers, which are non-native, which are really dependent upon honeybees for their pollination. So again, I would like to suggest that you save time and effort and don't write an ordinance at all. Thank you.
Any other, anybody else from the public? Seeing none, sensing none. New business from the council? Is there any new business? Alder Person Kasarag?
For the benefit of people getting signatures, I was hoping Mr. Sandak might help. But I did hear that until the ordinance actually is executed, no matter whose signature, be it the old wards or the new wards, were valid. Can we clarify if that's true?
I believe that's correct, but we'll get you, I'm sorry. I believe that's correct, but we'll have, I'll look in and make sure that's correct information.
Okay. So just those, there's not so much worry for people about getting it right and how quickly we need to update things?
Good information. Anybody else at the council, new business? Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, I heard it over here first, sorry. That was Marx for the adjournment. Voice vote, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Give us a couple minutes to switch over the silver plate. Call to Order, Committee of the Whole for Monday, August 19th, 2024. I am Alder Person Mike Bruno, along with Alder Person Bowring, representative of the First Ward. Moving down the agenda, let the record show that all alderpersons are present. Items of Business, 3A, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing-
You need to approve the minutes, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I skipped one. Item 2, Approve Committee of the Whole Minutes from August 5th and Special Committee Meeting Minutes from July 29th, 2024. Is there a motion? Moved by Bowring, seconded by Pashki. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, item 3A, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of the City of Geneva 2024 Employee Benefit Program Plan Renewal, Effective November 1, 2024. Moved by Pashki, seconded by Bowring.
If I may? Yeah. The first item this evening is the annual approval of the city's employee benefit plan. This includes health, dental, vision, and life insurance. As noted in the packet, the city, working through our friends at Assured Partners, obtained a favorable renewal, including a 2.5% decrease in health insurance-related costs. Pending approval, the city employees realize a reduction in insurance-related costs. This all occurs without any change to the current benefit offerings. And I just would note that we have Lauren Newton, HR manager, as well as Boomer Whipple of Assured Partners, in the audience to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Any questions or comments from the council?
All I would say is it looks like a favorable year. Percentage of changes, it looks like it's dropping. So, I mean, I think that says good things, so.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Alder Person Maladra?
Out there.
Thank you. Anything from the public? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor of item 3A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3B, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Fire Personnel Protective Clothing Clothing from W.S. Darley &amp; Company in the Amount of $27,820. Do I have a motion? Moved by Pashki, seconded by Bowring. Kind of a monopoly going on here. Any discussion? We do have Chief Antonori in the audience, if the council has any questions.
Just a question for the chief, kind of general. I have no problem with this. Is this, chief, is this set up on a program where we replace some every single year? Or is it every couple of years? Or do we go right to the 10 years and then?
No, we, when we started our safety program a few years ago for cancer prevention, we have two sets of gear now for every firefighter. The first set lasts five years in frontline, then goes five years in reserve. And then we purchase another set for frontline, so that they always have one to change into after a fire, so they can launder properly and maintain cleanliness. So we're in the process now of buying new gear for that cycle. And occasionally, damaged goods, or if we have somebody who is sized differently than what we have in stock, we may have to buy some extras there, so.
Do we buy extras then now, just in case we need them for damage, or?
No, we usually have, because of turnover, we usually have enough in stock if something were to happen. But today, nowadays, the, one of the sets of gears we buy is called Ready to Order. And if we had an emergency, we can get it in a few weeks.
Okay. All right. That was going to be mainly-
They make them in standard sizes, and they just ship them, and it's not a problem.
Thank you. At least I made sure that you sat through that whole meeting with a question, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3C, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Membrane Water Filters from Consolidated Water Solutions, Inc. in the Amount of $169,500. Do I have a motion? The combo hits again. Pashki, Bowring. Any discussion, or do you have a summary on this?
Quick summary, yes. Annual budget includes funds for the replacement of the membrane filters in one of four units at the water treatment plant. This is the second year of a four-year cycle to replace the membranes. Staff is recommending purchase of the filters from Consolidated Water Solutions, who provided the little bid for the filters. And again, we've got Superintendent Van Gaskim here with us this evening, if there are any questions.
Any questions, comments from the dais? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 3D, Consider Draft Resolution Waiving Competitive Bidding and Authorize the Purchase and Installation of Kinetrol Valve Actuators from Dornier Company in the Amount of $34,832. Mixing it up. Bowring, Pashki. Mr. Greedy, if you have a summary?
Yes. Staff is recommending approval of a resolution to continue replacing the water plant control actuators. The purchase will allow the city to replace the actuators that are failing. Placing the failing equipment not only reduces wear on other equipment at the plant, but also saves energy. Furthermore, the replacement of the actuators allows staff to standardize equipment used throughout the plant. And again, we've got Superintendent Van Gaskim here with us this evening, should you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from the dais or remotely? Mr. Van Gaskim, a quick question. Is this a sole-source type thing that we're waiving bidding?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That's it. Thanks. No other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 3E, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Labor Contract with Utility Dynamics Corporation for the Fiscal Year 2025 Underground Replacement Program in the Amount of $811,740, and Allow the City Administrator to Approve Change Orders Not to Exceed 10% of the Contract Amount for a not-to-exceed total of $892,914.44. Do I have a motion? Pashki and Marx. Very generous of you, Alder Person Bowring, to let someone else.
Just to say, if I may-
Yes.
For the final item here, staff recommends authorizing a contract with Utility Dynamics for the Fiscal Year 2025 Underground Replacement Program. And this is for work to be completed in the Dover Ridge subdivision. And I just would note that we have Superintendent Holton here with us for additional insights, if you will, tonight.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the dais on the matter? Oh, Alder Person Kilburg?
I had a question, Aaron. When we have a bid that we're letting that approaches almost a million dollars, and we're looking at about the latitude of about a $90,000 potential change order, I'm not questioning that. I guess, I'd be curious as to how a change order is processed here at Geneva. In other words, when you get a request, are these incremental, or are they a one-time request? And do we see a number of requests for change orders? In other words, is that sort of, sort of part of doing business? That you know you're going to get change orders, and you're going to have to address them? I think once you wade into a project, what do you do? You say, well, we're not going to pay that change order? I guess I'm just sort of curious as to how the city deals with change orders if the council's in agreement that they would also have an equal interest in learning about that.
Well, there's several different ways that we go about that. Typically, on these, even though this is an $800,000 contract, the scope of work is relatively compact. So we're pretty confident we won't have any change orders. That doesn't mean that, once the work begins, the contractor goes out to look at it in detail, we find conflicts. That's usually, at least in my division, we end up with mostly conflicts with other utilities that we have to work around. The process is they, the contractor works up what they think the change order should be and presents it to division staff. We evaluate it and see if it's valid or not. Sometimes we go back and we negotiate it down. You know, we say that, that looks a little, you know, excessive for what you're asking, and we think it could be done this way for less money, and kind of go back and forth a little bit like that. So on the larger contracts, such as the construction we have going on on the east side right now, we have consulting engineers, Stanley engineers. They have a more formal process, where the contractor presents the change order to them. As the engineers, they evaluate it again to see if it's valid or not. Present it to us for acceptance. We either accept it, or we go back and say no. We think we might be able to work something out here, and there can be a negotiation between us and the contractor. But we don't, we don't sign off on a change order until we're satisfied that it's going to be, it's warranted.
Is there generally agreement when you enter into that type of negotiation process? Or does it become protracted to a point where it might delay the project? Or is that the exception rather than the rule?
It can be both.
Okay.
You know, depending on how extensive the change order is.
Okay. Well, that was helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the dais? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we get Alder Person Maladra up there?
It said aye, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item four, public comment. Public comment. Item five, new business. Any new business from the dais?
Aye.
Alder Person Kilburg?
I guess I sort of have a request of the council as it reports to a topic that I hear quite frequently. I guess tonight I'm asking for the council's support for the addition to an upcoming Committee of the Whole meeting or potentially a special meeting for an exchange of information and discussion focused on, for lack of a better term, blighted properties in Geneva. In other words, properties that have been left go. Maybe blighted isn't necessarily the most correct term, but properties that have lingered and haven't been developed or brought back on stream as businesses, or properties that are in need of development. That's probably the right word. That's, that's probably the right word. I guess I'm interested in learning more from our staff regarding their thoughts and their needs. In other words, what is the staff needing to spur the development of these properties? What is it that the council could do to support those efforts to bring these, these projects, potential projects, or these sites that are concerning to the community along? I'm also interested in hearing the thoughts of other council people, other council persons, their ideas to move development forward at a more accelerated pace. And I guess I'm asking for the, the votes necessary to get that topic added to a future agenda so that we could have that discussion, and hopefully within the next maybe 60 days. So, I think that, I think it's important because those types of questions are at least the ones that I get asked quite often on a regular basis, and I think that, I think it would be informative, and I think it would be helpful for staff maybe to see if there's more that we could do as a council to support their efforts.
Others may have other comments. I'm not entirely sure, we're not talking, or you're not talking about, say, an absentee landlord letting a, a house?
No, I'm not talking about eight inches of grass.
Okay.
I'm talking about properties that we've seen here in Geneva for an extended period of time that are idle, and it doesn't appear that anything is really productive happening with it.
So.
And when I see plywood on State Street as an example, not the only examples, and I'm not referring to any specific properties, I'm just saying that's the type of an example that I think with effort could be addressed to at least minimize the appearance of blight in our community.
Any other, any comments on that? Alderperson Swanson.
I would agree with Alderperson Kilburg. I, I would change that from blighted maybe to stalled development projects, or vacant projects that have taken a long time to, to develop.
Yeah, that's maybe a better choice.
But I, I think that would be an interesting conversation.
So, are we looking to, are we, are we thinking staff isn't bringing information to, I'm trying to think of what we're trying to communicate to, to staff. You know, I know the, I've had, well.
If I may. Just two things, a couple of things come to mind. You know, first of all, I do know that the city administrator will be putting the request out, be reiterating that request in the weeks ahead as we start getting towards the annual strategic planning session, and this might be a topic to be elevated or suggested for that, for part of that time there, if council wishes to spend time diving into economic development. One of the things also come to mind too, as I recall, there was a presentation by Director Timoshenko, trying to think about how long ago that was, that went into some of the tools and things that we've, that the city has at its disposal, so we can also work on that topic with the city administrator as far as if there's a desire for there to be a follow-up to that conversation and how it applies to specific properties or things throughout, have the city in mind. I would, I would probably think that one of the most useful tools for the city administrator crafting that future topic would probably be some, just, just examples of things, of maybe some of the things you're thinking about, so we can better determine if it's code enforcement issues that you're thinking of, economic development, or, or projects that are, the city has or has not been privy to.
You know, as it relates to the council retreat, I think it's really important for the community to, that have, those that have an interest to see discussion as it relates to it. And, and I guess there may be ideas that we have that could be helpful to economic development and to staff to accelerate some of these areas of concern, properties that people bring up in discussion, where they ask the question repeatedly, what's the status in, or neighboring properties to residents. I just think that, I, I think staff would probably be interested in, in the thoughts of the council, and, and they may have ideas that they haven't brought forward yet that, that where we could allocate resources, or expand their toolbox to be more creative, or to be more aggressive as they communicate with, with parties that might be interested in developing within the city. Is that clear?
I'm not fully clear on what, what that looks like. Here.
I just had a question, maybe for some clarification about the legality of having discussions like that as a council. I know some of those types of discussions happen in, in closed session because they're about purchasing real estate, and I imagine that a lot of those discussions revolve around or include private parties that I am not, I don't know that I would be comfortable having conversations about. I, I just don't know what the boundaries of that are for us, because I think I know what he's asking about, but I, I feel like there's boundaries there somewhere that we're limited in what we can have discussions about, especially public discussions. Is that, I guess I'm looking for a little more clarification, too.
Yeah, there, I, I can't. And I think Alderperson Kilburg's wishing to develop some policy on underdeveloped or underused properties, and trying to use economic development and/or community development to try and get those parcels in a better situation. That's a perfectly proper conversation on a policy level. What I think you're referring to is if the city wishes to have a deeper involvement in a particular parcel, which would, if, if there's potential purchase, for instance, that would be something subject to one of the limited items for an executive or closed session. But I think the general concept is entirely appropriate, just depends on what you want to do.
Bowring.
Okay, so possibly our council has clarified this for me. I, I guess I wasn't totally clear on what was being requested. I, I guess my only, my first thought is that there are a lot of things coming down the pike for staff at the moment, and I'm not really comfortable putting in a policy request like this with a time limit. I would be interested to hear feedback from them, and I am certainly open to considering policy that we can undertake to contribute to economic development of blighted or underutilized properties, but I, within legal bounds. But I guess I, I also, like, are you suggesting that this should come before a discussion, say, about affordable housing, which is something that we were talking about at our strategic planning joint session with SPAC recently? I guess I'm, I'm curious how it fits in with that. And then also, I guess I'd like to hear a bit from our staff also about the extent to which we have tools that we're allowed to engage in under our non-home rule status that would change the landscape in a material way. So I guess my first inclination would be to try to get some feedback from staff about what, whether this is an area of policy that we can have a meaningful impact on. And then I, I'd like to understand how it does or doesn't relate to affordable housing, which is certainly, I think, something that we have expressed consensus is something we'd like to talk about more as a council at a policy level. Thank you.
Let's see, it was Kassarag and Mayor.
I was just going to say, I think it's a great topic. I think it's a great suggestion. I welcome it. I'm not sure what the, how it relates to, to affordable housing is. It's, it's, I don't see them as mutually exclusive, so I welcome both of them, and so I support Alderman Kilburg.
Alderman Mayor.
I generally support helping people develop properties in Geneva. I think the strongest way we do that is by voting for some of the ways that are at our disposal, like TIF. That sends a very clear message to people that we are going to support development. I would also be very open to discussing reopening the facade grant program. I would be open to discussing using general fund money for historic preservation, which I think was, is in our purview as well. I think that there's some properties within our city that could use a helping hand. And I think that the overwhelming quality of Geneva by its building stock is to be protected. So I'm, I'm in favor of having a discussion. I, I think that it's probably best at strategic planning, though. I think that that's where it starts. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I, I too have the sense that having that, having that discussion in the upcoming strategic planning with all staff there could be very useful, you know, when we're all in one room. Is that consistent with what you're?
So, if we're consistent with what we've done historically, we have over three people that are supportive of having this topic added to a future agenda, and I would, and again, I can't make a motion here, but I said, I guess what I'm stating is, is that there's sufficient support within the council to move forward with what I've outlined.
Is, is that like a signed document, or is this?
No, so he, he's, Councilperson Kilburg's right, so I will bring, and Ben's here, obviously. We'll get this to Stephanie, and then we'll ask, you know, our city administrator to figure out the best mode, whether it goes on a committee of the whole, or whether it requires a workshop in and of itself, or maybe it's a strategic planned initiative. But I think there's obviously enough people that want to talk about it, so we'll, we'll move it in one shape or another.
Okay.
I would stress, though, I think the community should have purview to the fact that it can be televised, and anyone that has an interest can view it.
I would.
Oh, yeah, it'd be an open meeting, for sure.
Yeah, we have to be, it seems like we'd have to be careful with the bounds about talking about specific properties.
It's policy.
Yeah. Very good. Anything else from the, under new business? We do have closed session tonight under item six. That's the, need a motion to move to closed session.
Somewhat.
Kassarag, Mayor.
Under pending litigation, just for the.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Pending litigation, five, Illinois, ILCS 120 slash 2C 11.
No move.
Oh, no, we got Kassarag and Mayor.
Okay, that's a third. That's a third then, okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Kassarag.
Aye.
Malandra.
Malandra, aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Pashki.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
And you could say it's passed, but there's no, no further action.
There is no further action after this meeting, so anyone who wants to turn off their TV can. Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Somewhat.
Marx and Kilburg.
Aye.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else for the purpose of open session? Do I have a motion to adjourn? I'll give the Kassarag. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.